We pause for a moment, it sounds good. Thank you very much. Welcome back to the band room. If you like your car away. Welcome. On our monthly meeting, we're here to accomplish the business of schools for the sake of our students. We do want to hear from our citizens that are top of the public comment. Prior to action items on the agenda, we ask that speakers identify themselves and their home district. We also ask that their comments are limited to three minutes and will provide equity for all speakers and to ensure meeting is reasonable in length. Get more information that can be summarized in three minutes, please. Provide leave behind materials for review. The moderator will ask you to conclude your remarks. This time has elapsed. If you have questions during the session, you may ask for clarification from your school board member or a school administrator after the meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming. We have a motion to adopt the agenda, please see.
Mr. Mills, can we please amend the agenda to add the student liaison? Typically, they don't always come this summer, but he and then he.
He and he.
So I should go to the latter.
Cam, Cam is like, oh, man. Two point eight, where does it go?
Um, it would be in front of donations.
Right, two point eight.
Two point four five. It's reading two point four and two point five.
Oh, before donations, right, alright.
Two point four.
Five.
Two point four point five.
We know our decimals here on the system.
That's right.
Student liaison.
Well, yeah.
Great. Alright, with the agenda modified, is there someone that would adopt that agenda?
Hello.
We have a motion from Mr. Barnes, second. Second, Mr. Grove, all paid, right? Close, no. It's ordered. The very next thing on the agenda. It's our student liaison. Please call. Cam. Were you expecting to speak tonight, Cam? No? It's interesting, you know, once you're appointed, sometimes you don't, things just happen and you have to kind of wait. Hey, can you, yeah, that's what makes her even.
Yeah.
Hey, that's good.
Like honestly, I just got an invitation to come here and I'm, I literally not like too long ago, like I emailed Tom Seward for like, to help me like on this report and he still hasn't like responded. And then I was like, are you sure they want me to come? And I'm like, you know what, I'll make the effort, I'll come down here and just hear this and that.
Nice.
And, yeah, but.
Thanks for coming.
Yes. But something of that nature. Though I, the only really date I can really give you is that, um, possibly, I think senior teachers are supposed to come probably in July. I don't really have a specific date, but I know that's supposed to be one of our upcoming events since I'm, you know, becoming a senior myself. So, yeah, that's my question. And I did have a, we did have like a little, like a lot of fun at Pride event that, you know, you all helped. And just, the phone machine was actually very fun for me, even though I was not intending to be a bit at all. And so when came charging behind me and of course maybe following it. So I had a fun thing, fun talking thing, but it was still fun regardless. But that's really all I have to say, thank you.
Great. Thanks, Cam. Everybody likes surprises, good job. That phone thing looked like a total mess. I wouldn't have gone anywhere near Boston House.
I didn't have to take you with.
Alright, moving on donations.
Commit to be fit donated a fifty dollar Dicks gift card for senior week raffle. Tony Atkins donated five hundred dollars for the boys basketball committee camp. And Five Stones Tech donated five hundred and twenty-five dollars for the fourth grade picnic.
Alright, thank you very much. Uh, moving on to the adoption of the mints. We, we had a meeting on June the 10th, a regular meeting, and then we had our retreat on June the 3rd, where we discussed court norms and protocols. Is there a motion to adopt both of these sets of mints? So, we have a motion from Mr. Eubin, is there a second? Second, Mr. Grove, is there any comment? All in favor, aye? Aye, close, no. Mr. Grove, did you have an opportunity to repeat the bill?
I did, and everything's in order, we're closing in on the end of the year and all the numbers are right.
Chinese, yeah.
All the percentages are in there. They had a little.
Good. Good. Alright. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Consent agenda contains donations, uh, bills, the attendance report, and the homeschool report. We have a motion. Move motion, Mr. Barnes, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Eubin, all paid, aye? Aye, close, no. Dr. Brinsley.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the school board. Um, the first item on the reports of the superintendent is actually a family futures update. So this time I will invite Ian Yuman to the podium, Tom Massey to the podium, a former of the family teachers to introduce the guest speaker.
I'll do that.
Hey, sir.
Thank you so much. Thanks, Tom Massey. For those who don't know, I've had the privilege of serving as chair of Family Futures Council. It's my second year, I guess they would give me the chance to do it, right? Really excited about the program. It's, uh, it's kind of the evolution of the program. Cecilia Lozano is here to kind of speak to us about as a second grade teacher. But just quick synopsis, it's a one page document. If you guys have a little more information, we'll see that we've, after our final deposit in spring, have a little over fifty-one thousand dollars in savings for kindergarten, first and second grade fits. And that's a pretty great number, but the part that fascinates me is that's not money that's given. It's about the neighborhood of eighteen thousand dollars that are given. Every kid's given a hundred dollars the first day, second grade. The rest gets earned by kids by demonstrating financial knowledge and improving financial knowledge. And then they're going to the first grade and second grade level, and through the third grade level. We have a lot of activity that's occurring with our board. And the teachers in the third grade, second, fourth grade, and fifth grade working on a great program how to develop this and do it. Hopefully some of what is looking on. Cecilia Lozano is a La Pata native. And I met her tonight, but I know she's, uh, I, based on her age, I know she's kind of supposed to be about her age, and my brother, so that was kind of. But anyway, uh, an alum is here and brought our talents back home. And you're going to be blown away when you see what she's done in her class and how she's brought the real world into her class, expanding financial knowledge, got a second grade level and a higher. So this could all learn something this evening. And I thank her for her time and effort. And this is kind of what we see as our program in more, so we can't do it all with just our people. Dividing from the teachers and in making it there, she's helped us program really, really grow to this and finding some other problems.
Hey, everybody. Um, thank Tom. It's a pleasure to be here this evening, speaking to you all about how I've incorporated My Family Futures and its mission into the classroom here at Rappahannan County. Again, my name is Cecilia Lozano and I teach second grade. Um, so some background information about the classroom economy project. Um, after the 2020-2021 school year, I noticed a tremendous deficit in student mastery of the standards that were centered around financial literacy and concepts of money. Um, in order to be responsive to this deficit, I knew that I needed to create something that was lasting throughout the year and provided many opportunities for students to engage and interact with financial literacy. And keeping in mind My Family Futures and its mission, it provided a wonderful opportunity to prosper the learning and financial literacy daily and weekly in the classroom. Um, I came up with a classroom economy that was based off of our social studies curriculum and standards of learning and integrated that with the math concepts of money, where students were given jobs and they were tied into a weekly salary. To begin with math, uh, to incorporate multiple modalities of learning, we get tactile and hands-on learning, which again aligns with the mission of My Family Futures to incorporate hands-on learning opportunities for students. Um, by providing multiple modalities of learning and opportunities for students to interact with real money, they make more meaningful connections with the money. For example, play money is fun, however, it feels very different than real money. I had one student make the connection of the difference between a quarter and a nickel and that the quarter is ridged and the nickel, he could tell was smooth. And so he was really able to identify quickly his coin name and value and add it to his sum and his salary. This wouldn't have been able to be accomplished without a tactile learning activity using real money. And I just took an old change jar that was very full and we spread it out in a big circle. The next two images illustrate more of this tactile learning activity. And the first image that says count sort bravo, you can see three students coming up with the same sum in three different ways. So again, it really meant the student, like where they were in their understanding and they could build upon that. I would then challenge the students to come up with a quicker way to make the same sum in which they would reorganize. So a student with all nickels would then sort to dimes and so forth. Also, by working in this way, I was able to identify any misconceptions and do a quick one-to-one conference with the student as portrayed in the second image to address any misconceptions and keep the lesson going. This is a quick video of a mid lesson check for understanding of our adding and subtracting and counting. So as you can see, there are one student who used all nickels and the other student used dimes, but it's still got the same sum and they got to feed off of each other's, um, understanding in that. Similar to reading, financial literacy is not inherent. And to solidify the concepts and understanding, you need to review, review, and repeat and practice frequently so that they do have fluency, a financial fluency. In the first image, it highlights differentiation of instruction for our visual learners. Again, accessing the multiple modalities of learning. There's an anchor chart with the images of coins, their names and values. And then two images of the students practicing the counting and sorting activities again. Our in-class jobs and duties, this highlights the cross-curricular component of our classroom economy. Social studies provided a wonderful platform for this. And our year begins with talking about types of communities and community contributors. And so instead of having classroom jobs associated with a prize box or a sticker chart, I figured we could incorporate a weekly salary into the classroom jobs. Um, so we have meteorologist, electrician, weight staff, which is a breakfast buster and a lunch buster. Uh, there's a classroom nurse and a materials manager. So I tried to incorporate the terminology from our social studies classroom community or community into our classroom community. As the complexity of the standards grows throughout the year, so does their salary. And so while the electrician makes seventy-five cents at the beginning of the year, at the end of the year, it'll make a dollar seventy-five. So they're adding to their foundational understanding. With their earnings, there's weekly time designated to calculating your balances and sums and adding your new salary to that. Students are given a sheet where they put in their sum that's in their little bank account and you will see what that looks like in a second. And then they determine how much they're earning that week. And then they get to choose what they're going to do with it. Are they going to spend it, save it, spend and save? And then they come up with their total and if they can reach their goal or if they need to save more. Payday is very exciting in our classroom. Uh, although it's every Friday, every week, the students still ask me what day it is throughout the week. And I tell them Friday, don't worry. So when they're given their real money, again, they have the opportunity to choose what they do with their money. None of this money goes home, it stays in the classroom. And so there isn't any idea that someone made more or they're actually earning from it. So they can save for something in their classroom store. They can spend a little, save a little, or they can spend it all. It's up to them based on what they want and their calculations. I also want to note by talking about the bank that next year, by working with My Family Futures, Lacy and Glinny in the classroom, we're going to be adding a donating component to the classroom choice. So they can spend, save, or donate to a collective goal for the classroom. And that was an idea from My Family Futures. Um, go back to it's one if you don't mind. So this is the, um, classroom bank, piggy bank. They all have a Ziploc bag that they keep their coins in under their job. And when the job switch, their name switches along with it. And so when it's time to get paid, they go collect their bag and add their change to, again, recount and revisit, um, their sum. The classroom store stocked full of highly sought-after items from the dollar store. It's tiered according to our classroom economy. So if you see a gumball is twenty-five cents and crayons are seventy-five cents, while the dartboard is three dollars. And so students can again choose how they want to use their money in the classroom economy. Here is our shopping event. As you can see, everybody participates and they're incredibly eager. I have to continually tell them, step back, wait your turn. Um, and my little friend in the middle is just very excited. So this is a shopper in action, um, demonstrating her economic choice on how she's going to spend her weekly earnings. So while our little friend there was eager to spend her fifty cents on her Play-Doh, um, I shared the story of my one little friend who saved for eight weeks to purchase that dartboard for three dollars. And when he did, the whole classroom cheered for him to meet his goal. And they were just so happy that he finally got his dartboard and he was really, really happy also. So in conclusion, it's been really great collaborating with My Futures to create this classroom economy and to bring their mission into supporting our educational objectives here at RCES. Um, I'm honored to be a part of the My Futures Curriculum Planning Committee this summer in order to support teachers and incorporating this into their classrooms seamlessly. And I look forward to seeing how the program continues to grow. So thank you for your time this evening. Any questions? Well, the My Future program is expanding and we're just thrilled with how all these options into the classroom and the community. And it's really just taking off so much, I think better than any of us anticipated at first, so it's great to see that. And then we have enthusiastic, uh, teachers like Cecilia Lozano, who's really taking it to heart and ready it to the next level. And then helping incorporate that into the different classroom. So that's really great. I was just curious about the jobs, that they, do they have favorite jobs or do they get to negotiate each job they do? Or is it? There's no negotiation and there's no hiring process. At the beginning of the year, everyone wants to be the messenger or teacher's helper. However, because of the social studies unit, we're able to talk about how every, um, community contributor is important to helping the community work smoothly. And so we use that to also develop the classroom rules. And so they kind of gain the understanding that they're all going to get some of each one at some point throughout the year. That's good. Okay, thanks.
I was noticing too on this letter, um, that Travis is sitting there with, I guess, is he? Anyway, it's, it's the fact that this, this program is making its way to people's homes and, um, parents are negating children on these topics as well. It's been a very healthy thing for the family.
And even as a parent, I have a rising third grader who was one of the first cohorts to experience this. Um, and I can tell you, it's just every year, it's going to be a little bit better and better and better and more engaging for the home, uh, too. So parents who are getting a lot of information about how to engage their program as well, which is fantastic. Alright, um, item four point two on the agenda is our facilities update. So I'm going to ask Dr. Bolt to present that. I just brought that to follow right here, I just got to say, doesn't seem fair. So you guys have been interested in Solon up and trying to keep up with what's going on with this new material equipment. So I met with two companies, Sun Tribe and Amaresco. Sun Tribe found out that roofs aren't large enough to accommodate what we need to be cost neutral. And there's not enough land, so I asked about parking lots. But because of the cost of steel, it's, it's prohibited. We couldn't make back what we put into it. So Sun Tribe, they anticipate with the legislation changes coming, we all know the infrastructure's there and it hasn't been released yet. And then the commodity and labor, right now, things are up and down so much that it's hard to pinpoint where we're at. So we decided to meet again in January, February and do a readabout, examine the whole thing. I also met with Amaresco. And that slide you're seeing, the first one, is the, um, main building of the elementary school. And they would do lonely roof mounts, but you can't, it's all set at a hundred percent. So we would only cover eighty-six percent, so it cost us fourteen percent of, it wouldn't be cost effective to do it. But we ended up paying for the service. Did they include the oxygen? Yes, he did, I just didn't have, I was on there. And then the next slide is the high school. And again, it's not one hundred percent offset, so we, it actually cost us money to do it. So they, we discussed it and it's not cost effective. And the same thing, the legislation, that's the key point that both companies were making, that once things sub down from our COVID era and steel prices come down, solar panels is falling really high right now also. So in January, February next year, I'm going to be with both groups again to see if the legislative things have come through to them and through to the schools. So I just want to give you an update that I've been on top of a meeting and trying to figure this out. But right now, just as money's not there to make a real profile. I know you don't want to spend money too much over, it costs us more. You have any questions on that?
I appreciate you continuing.
Well, and I will, I've got a bar to my calendar for next year to go ahead and start meeting again so that to hopefully things have changed, price, steel prices have come down. The lumber dropped ten percent in the last month, so the prices are coming down, but. Do you have, did they give you cost estimates or? They did, they just did our analysis, they said it was just cost prohibitive, even touch, they wouldn't even make money. Cause they said there's no way anybody would go for it, so. Yeah, were you able to look at any smaller, more local companies? Uh, Sun Tribe is actually out of, um. They're out of, yeah. They're, they're, and Amaresco is all over the country. So, you know, once I got the second one, I sort of thought, well, this is the. Yeah, it seems like a pattern. Right. I mean, I could keep talking to everyone and, but, so I talked to Shannon and we discussed it. We thought, let's wait, there is money coming. Yeah. There, the infrastructure failed, there is money coming and that's going to make our cost. I have faith, there's money coming. Um, the next thing I wanted to talk about with legionnaires disease. We, um, are required by the state to do an annual plan now. So I just want to go over a couple of things of what legionnaire is and what we do and have been doing to, um, hook out for them. So legionnaire can grow in showerheads and sinks, cooling towers, hot water tanks, uh, the heaters, ice machines, and plumbing and pipe work. So basically it's stagnant water. It isn't plumbing, pumping. So the, so stagnation, the temperatures are between sixty-eight and a hundred twenty-two degrees. The pH is between five and eight point five sediment, like the bottom of a cooling tower can cause it. So that causes the microorganism, organisms to grow. And I just, I just want to put out there that we have been testing for legionnaires disease ever since high school. And we have flushing here, the flushing of our water tanks. We have the water sewer already come in and turn our faucets on to keep the water going. So this is nothing new that we haven't been doing, we just wrote it all down and you have to approve it. And this will have to happen annually. Now into the fun stuff, the capital improvement plan. So this year, we've been able to get quite a bit done. The high school HVAC boiler system in the classrooms were put on controls so that we could remotely turn the boiler on and off. It is an outdoor thermostat that will automatically cut on when it's needed and cut off when it's not. It's, it will save us in fuel costs a lot. Because before, what they're doing is they're manually cutting on that boiler and then when the teachers fuss, they turn it off. Now we have a control on there, so I'm hoping that we see some improvement in our fuel costs from now. Um, we were, been able to remodel four classrooms, two at the high school, two at the elementary school. And I don't know if anybody knows, they graduated the gym, but we were able to new bleachers, paint, uh, remodel that area, and it was time. And then a new concession floor and paint the concession area. And then the biggest thing we did was a VR system in the hallway, replaced that. So I don't know if you remember, we were having terrible trouble with that. Those one unit would go down and they'd take off six classrooms. So, um, we were able to replace that and it worked well, so. What is the error, I said? I knew you were going to ask this and I looked it up, it was variable, refrigeration, etc. So what it is, it's, it's like a huge HVAC, huge. And off of that, three classrooms would go. But each classroom can control the temp to a certain, I mean, we, we don't want to go crazy, but you know, they can do it to like six cent. And it does heat and AC. But most teachers would just turn it off, because if you do have a boiler system, that's much more effective, warmer heat than a HVAC is, uh, we're familiar with the boiler system, but that's nice heat. So we're making strides, we're getting there, slowly but surely. So, and I'm sure you all aware that we've just found out, we're sure that we are giving a million dollars as soon as the governor signs that on that, we will be getting a million dollars for capital improvement. Which is so exciting, so exciting. And that is what the school board put into the budget anticipation should that happen. And I was planning on the two hundred thousand, but with a million, what I'll do is I'll do this year's, then I'll start on the next year's. And so that hopefully we can convince that five years down to two and a half. And so that hopefully we can convince that five years down to two and a half years. And that the money can roll over. So it's not money that has to be given back at the end of the year, it'll roll over to the next year. So there's not a rush to spend it all in a year, which I think would be part of, I mean, a million dollars is a lot of money to get back. So the capital improvement plan, it's a, the basics are there, but the fact that you're anticipating. And so I tried to look out five years, but four years from now, there might be something more pressing. So, you know, each year I go back and I sort of tweak it a little bit to see what's there. So, you know, we're at 22, 23. So this coming year, which starts July 1, we're going to do four classrooms. We're going to finally enclose the metal classroom, metal shop classroom, put glass in HVAC system. So when it's 100 degrees outside, those students have a place to go on and do virtual things because it gets really warm in there. We're going to reseal the school board parking lot and that's all part of the maintenance of when those, that's what was done, so we've done those pools. Now we're going to do the school board office. We're going to move the high school trailer that's back behind the nursery. We're going to redo the locker rooms, the concession restrooms, replace the elementary school HVAC. We, I don't know if we were able to take the school board office briefly, but we're going to repair that and paint and reseal that. And then the next year, which hopefully happens, that will get done this year, is remodel five more classrooms, repair. I don't think we need to redo the track, it's just maintenance that needs to be done. So we're going to look at that. The barge units at the elementary school, those are those big things when you pull up, they hang on outside the wall. So pretty much past their prime, so we're going to start systematically replacing them. You know, the worst ones first and the ones that caused the most trouble on the road with. The elementary school gym, the interior gym, there's a hallway that goes around it up the front, down the side. It needs to be replaced. And it's that rubbery spongy stuff. There's been a lot of leaks, so for right now, they're taking care of the leaks, but I've talked to four different roofing companies and they all suggest replacing it because it's past its prime. So that's on there. And then we modeled the high school library. We started last year working on it. The funding wasn't there, so with this million dollars, we can put that back in our capital improvement plan. 24 and 25, we're going to do five classrooms and 10 barge.
Can Dr. Bolt not cite me, elaborate on what goes into a remodel of a classroom?
Sure. Basically everything's taken out of classrooms. It's repainted, new tile, new, that stuff around the bottoms called cobase, all that's replaced. Ceiling tiles replaced, if needed, the, you know, grids are replaced or touched up if needed. And then all new classroom furniture. Teachers get a new desk, chair, trash can, two metal cabinets, two filing cabinets and two bookcases. And that seems to really make the teachers happy because they have school. And then it depends on the classroom. A lot of the teachers like the science tables because they're sturdy and two can sit there and there's room for a laptop plus a notebook. So new tables, new chairs. So.
Does it include any technology?
Yes, it does. Thank you for asking.
You do on here. It's what you asked me to say.
Thanks. So I don't know if you've noticed in our classrooms, we have data projectors. Well, I've been here 11 years and I actually put those data projectors in. So, but I mean, I actually got up and mounted them around the cave. So they are past their prime. So we're going to an interactive monitor that is 75 inches so that the teachers don't have to really wire it all. Teachers can screencast and up to 10 kids can be there at one time working on things. So it is the latest technology. So yes. And then of course, each classroom has a chromebook part. And then I work with teachers if there's a special interest or something, you know, or something, famous teachers always want an extra bookcase. So I talk to each teacher and see what does each needs.
And is that special, that smart board, better than smart board thing, is that going, that's separate from the remodel?
No, no, that's part of the remodeling.
Okay. So it's just five, like two classrooms at a time or five classrooms at a time?
We also have technology funds that I use for that because some teachers, their projector's gone and if it needs to be replaced, I'll replace it with an interactive monitor because I don't want to buy another projector and spend a lot of money on bulbs.
So all the classrooms will have something?
Every classroom will have something.
Right.
So if the projector goes, then I go ahead and replace it with that.
It's similar to what they're doing at Royal Ridge, as you've been. Have you taken a tour of the rebuilding at Royal Ridge? It's very similar to what they're doing in the technology side of that whole complex.
I think we're all aware of, you know, laptops don't last more than a few years. Technology's ever evolving and things become outdated. Smart boards, I mean, I don't know of any schools that are using smart boards now because it just cost prohibitive for one thing. And for the same price, you can get that interactive monitor that serves multi-purposes. You'll notice at the end, 26, 27, the sewer system, we're going to have to do something with the sand pit. You can't do anything until the federal government comes up with what the lubric rate, that's a discharge rate needs to be. And until that's done, we don't know what systems to put in or what to do to ours to make it. So I've kept it as a placeholder because I know it's coming. So I just want to keep that on the radar because it is coming and we'll have to plan for that. I mean, we'll have time to plan for that because usually once they do something, you have a certain number of years to get it done. But I just want to keep it on the radar and that's where I put it on.
No way to connect that with Washington?
I would love if we could. But you're running, it would be sewer lines. I mean.
You go for miles and miles and lots of places. And it makes sense to me, we think about that, at least we start talking, or even the scary building.
Well, I talked to Pam LaParke, who actually, she helped.
Scary building needs an upgrade now, maybe we can help them.
That's what I'm thinking. What I was hoping with the incoming, the size of the board office, that they might want sewer. That would help, you know, if they want sewer or they would have to bring the line.
Well, they have the inch building, they go.
Yes. Yes, the warehouse will be there. So I was hoping that that would solve a lot of issues.
That is a great point.
So, any other questions?
Okay, thank you. I just had one question, actually. I know that carpet in this room, they may use the radiator.
It is. And what you're looking at, carpet isn't as old as you think it is.
It is, I think it just maybe.
It is being cleaned.
You're in New York, more durable.
Well, this is commercial grade carpet. And I told Shannon, I said, carpet looks terrible, but the company that we cleaned, the cleaning company, carpets have to come in. So they'll get close to this. It looks, I'll agree with you 100%, that was a comment I made. That carpet looks terrible, but the cleaning company hasn't come in to clean the carpets. So they clean here and then the library.
Do they do things with such?
Yes, we can get that up there. And, and I was, who was I having to discuss with? Because I'd like to replace the carpet, but I'm thinking about the sound. You know, there's carpet in there for a reason. So when the new band teacher, I will bend her ear and see if there's an alternative. Because I'm more the feelings too. I think it's a great idea, but that would be, I mean, it wouldn't be, it's quite an area, but we have the money to do it, you know, sync and.
Band booster is a helpful.
That's true. All right, thank you all.
Thank you, Dr. Bolt.
I apologize, my screen on this side is really different than this one, so technical difficulties. All right, the next item is the federal program application. So I'm going to ask Dr. Johnson to come to the podium and explain the annual federal program applications.
I'm going to concur with Dr. Bolt that this type of financial project is nearly as fun as what's going on in secondary. That's kind of my type of financial planning. These grant applications really give us quite the challenge and opportunity. But anyway, so this is the time of year where we present our federal grants to you for approval so that, I think there's an approval section in the meeting tonight. The first grant is the Title I grant that is to help to approve basic programs in the school. Dr. Grimsley oversees the Title II grant, which helps to find teacher administrator training. The Title III grant is not very much money, but it helps to support our English language learners. And then Title IV, student support and academic enrichment. So for the upcoming school year for Title I, we have, based on last year's amount, they asked us to use that nonprofit grant, so that's a little over $157,000. Please note that that is over $20,000 less than what we've received in the past. So I'm not sure that's driven by the number of students in the program or the number of students in the school division, but we're seeing a little decline in there with each pass of school year. And else the other one backed up, so that's a big difference. So the funds in Title I are overall used to support our Title I staff. With the decline in the amount of money, we will be funding 70% of our reading and math interventionist. We typically done 100% of that, but you know, we are reducing that and we'll pick up the rest with local funding at this time. We also have, I think, five peer professionals who split their time between regular duties and Title I. So their salary will be, a portion of their salary will be paid for our Title I funds along with the related benefits for all of those positions. We also use Title I for online intervention programs, materials and supplies, if there's enough left. We're required to do a set aside in there for homeless students or some way to support them. So we usually set aside a small amount for its transportation for homeless students. For instance, we have a student who lived in Loop de Front Royal and they went into its 10th school in Rapid Hana County, their school of origin. We could help to support that through Title I funds. And then finally, family engagement. We like to do a literacy night in the fall to get our parents and our kiddos in there to do some reading activities so we can let time to be wasted.
Dr. Grimsley, we're talking about Title II. Um, sure. Not very much money at all. We get in the following year, what's allocated is $27,106. And that is used for things like tuition assistance, teacher recruitment, conferences and trainings, and then degree program cohort support, which we are starting a new one. And the reason being, the past couple of years due to COVID, we did not have too many in-person trainings or conferences that people were going through, which some of this funding is allocated towards. So we're able to use these because they are about 18 to 21 month grants, so they don't follow the same local fiscal year. So that, those ones do get rolled over. So what we're going to do is start a master's and a doctoral cohort, potentially augmenting that with some Type II funds and some other grant funds through our teacher wellness grant to support professional development. That was something teachers really were requesting, opportunities to build their expertise and they really love the cohort model, especially when tuition is greatly reduced for them. So that's one, uh, for fiscal use, and then they're very successful in that.
Speaking of small sums of money, and actually.
I think there is, I mean, the type of, no, $3,953 or 10 cents for Title IV.
So that really doesn't get us very far at all, but it is more than what we've received in the past. And even though it's a small amount of money, we can give bang for our buck with our adult students. This past school year, we had, there's a test that our students take in the spring that's called the access for the WITAS standards, which is kind of like the English language learner requirement. So we give that test every spring and we had six students who tested or scored high enough this year to exit the program. In the past, we typically had one, two or three students. This year we had six. There were a total of 39 students who were identified for that program this year. And of those students, based on my informal in-house calculations, which looks similar to what goes on in secondary, but based on my in-house calculations, we had 66% make progress with that test, which our goal for the year was 60%. So I feel like we're definitely making great gains and they're wonderful staff supporting our students. So we're going to utilize the bulk of that money to help expedite this for our two staff members who are providing after-school tutoring for these students, which was absolutely phenomenal this year. They were able to build relationships with our students as well as their families by doing this after-school tutoring and really I feel a lot of student interest in the program. And then in the fall, we had a meet and greet event for our L families. We had one this past fall, which was the first we've had in a couple of years. Wonderful turnout at the Alderman family was able to make the event. They had giant pizzas from Foxes and it was just a real, a real fun time to be out with parents and families. And the last type of grant, Title IV, we received $11,000 to budget for this whole year, which is again, is a small decrease, but continue to use that for counseling services, positive behavioral interventions. We use some of that funding to help pay for our social skills curriculum and then to get a stipend to our school social workers, maintain the after-school performance services. So that's definitely a huge undertaking. We want to make sure that person is compensated for that. So that's all we have on federal grants. Do you have any questions? Anything, or Shannon?
Thank you so much, Dr. Johnson. Item 4.4 is the VSA May 2022 policy updates. It's not an action yet. So this is just for review for action at the next school meeting. So those are there for the explanations and the red lines.
So while I was reading it too.
It's very entertaining.
Well, there's, so I'd like to ask the policy committee, before we get back here next time, to, there are several things in there that says it's a blank. It will say, local school boards must decide how it's filling this file, right? And so it'd be nice for the policy committee to fill in the blanks. And also, I was reading this very interesting section about this new idea they have where if you're not able to get, if you're a school member and you're not able to get to a meeting, that you can come into a meeting virtually and actually participate. And that's the language, is participate, right? You're not, so you're basically a voting member of the quorum. The quorum, so anyway, that's one section that really needs to be aired out. How many times a year can a person do that? That's one of the blanks. There's another one I was thinking about, which needs to be addressed, which is not in there, but I can read, maybe I missed it. But whoever's moderating needs to be in the room. And it's not written in there. So it's the chairman is the one that is decided he has to be here, she has to be remote. It leaves everyone else in a pickle, I think. So it needs, I think we need to emphatically say, the moderator must be present. So it needs, I think we need to emphatically say, the moderator must be present, right? So, so little things like that, there's a lot of changes in there and some very positive things. I saw something where seventh and eighth graders in particular are, uh, there's a law enforcement engagement just for seventh and eighth grade, which is fascinating. Not that I'm saying we need to change that, I'm just thinking it's the level of details that are changed, significant changes.
Very specific.
Very specific.
So historically, historically, they have not been this specific. And so it'd be a good thing, I think, for our policy committee to visit some of those things and make sure, you know, we certainly are all reading them, but just make sure before we get back to vote on them that we have a recommendation from the committee about blanks and specifics.
Should we not have blanks filled in before we vote on them?
Well, the policy... Usually it's jots and tittles. This particular time around, it's more than jots and tittles.
Yeah, right.
Right now, if the policy committee makes changes, they'll be posted and we'll get to review them. And they'll be reasonable because they'll be local, right? And that's why we have a policy committee. It's the only committee we have.
But if they maybe make changes or fill in blanks, we should probably give a copy of that prior to the meeting.
We will. And we will.
It should be shown which blanks we wrote. That should be the signature of the...
And so can you make sure it's, so changes are in red or something so it's easy for us to see? Because it is a, it's a huge... Change, yeah. Huge set of changes. Yeah, it's, it's an important set. It's not the standard. And I did notice there was a place where the word, so it was talking about making the principal aware of something. And the word "his" was...
I think that's...
Yeah, it was stroked through, but, or straightened away. Because I remember Dr. Bold and I were talking about how only males could be principals in the state of Virginia according policy. We know it do. But they're correcting little things, but a lot of big things at this time. I'm changing. They are. So I just wanted to make sure that we spun this review and add. Thanks. Anything else?
That's all the reports and superintendents tonight. Thank you, Mr....
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Okay, moving on to reports of our representatives. Spina, do you have a report from Headwaters?
I do have a report. Getting it right now. And I did, I didn't meet in person, unfortunately, with Brittany, that we have communicated. She sent me some information. I'm hoping that my Wi-Fi will... Do you want to report first?
Sure, I can hear you. My, my Wi-Fi is working.
My Wi-Fi is not working that well.
Uh, we, uh, we met on June 9th.
Can you hear us okay?
No.
Oh.
Can't hear.
Is that better?
Nice, got it.
The Governor, Mountain Vista Governor's School met on June 9th. It was our organizational meeting at that, at this point in time. We elected all officers, chairs, vice chairs and so forth. We determined that the Middletown campus will be closed during the summer. The Warren County campus will be open Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM, 3:00 PM. The board meetings of Mountain Vista traditionally done at Provo. The Warren County Board Office of the last... We're going to do something different this year. We're going to rotate the meetings to the different districts, to the different counties so that people get to see counties and we, we also get to show off a little bit when we have our own meeting. So that would be an interesting way of doing things. Let's see, what else? We will have five students be enrolled in the program next year. And we have, I think, and it's still six slots we have, right? But we have five students at this point in time. We could still add a student if we had to, sort of, if somebody wanted to. But that's where we are.
All right, thank you.
All right. And this is for Headwaters. The summer course is going to begin on June 20th. And Verdun will be coming out to the schools to do team building exercises with participants. The summer course community performance is going to be on June 1st, it's a Friday at 5:30 at High School.
July?
June, July 1st, must be July.
That's July.
It's not in the past, it's in a few weeks. I'll amend that.
At 5:30?
Yeah, it's at 5:30 and it's at the, at the High School at the, in the auditorium. And Headwaters is going to have after-school in the fall. They'll be offering new enrichment opportunities to students and bringing back the Workshop Wednesdays, which will bring in community presentations, different numbers of community will need those, which is, which is exciting, is a good opportunity for engagement. And Headwaters is preparing to hire its next set of rap writing interns doing journalism. Luke Ellis is able to know for the ones who just graduated and won't be doing it. And they're still looking for two more people for that. And Headwaters has hired Lacey Jenkins in a new role as Deputy Director of Programs. She started on May 1st. And she is now the overseer of after-school, the Star Fish Mentor Program and the Summer Course. So that's...
That's great. All right, thank you. Uh, moving on to, sorry.
Oh, I was...
Okay, moving on to 6.1, Discussion and Conference of Plan. Tonight would be the night that we would adopt a conference of plan. It acts united 8.3. Is there any discussion from the board at this second, this particular point?
Yeah, it's a, a little bit of discussion. I just have, it's, it's an interesting combination of broad and general and like very specific. And I'm not sure, I haven't seen that many other, but I guess, I guess I, I like the feel of it. And I'd like to see it, um, I'm, I'm, I'm happy with it in its format. I just like, I'd like to understand a little more of the communication of some of those pieces, I guess. Careful to see that, but, if I agree with this. Communication's like...
Right, and the documents also hopefully that you were able to see on board docs are the worksheets that teachers will be using. And also the next phase of this, this is meant to be more of a broad overview of the various, the priority areas with specific strategies and objectives. The working documents show different implementation timelines, more in-depth strategies that are utilized by the administrative team to guide that work. And then there will be a continuous school improvement plan that's done annually at each building to also figure that out. So there's a lot of pieces of this that goes into that. And part of it is a big evaluation piece too. How, how far did we make it toward that objective? What other things need to be done? How did you change the worksheet as you were implementing the goal? Because the state said we were getting this, but now we're getting this. So now we had to change that strategy, things like that. So it's meant to be a little bit fluid in that sense, but we want to give the road to a wonderful, is the open, the five here. So hopefully capture that. We did make a few little tweaks to try to reemphasize the, the parallel emphasis on not just academics, but also career preparation and workfulness readiness and life readiness in the document. I did have a really great conversation with a few community members, even just today, about the comp plan. And just, I realized that we hadn't put in our nondiscrimination statement. And that makes a really great point to just reaffirm and explicitly state that we offer an inclusive environment that strives to be looking toward an equity lens and all the opportunities. So we did add that as well, just to re-emphasize that. It is on our website and most of our documents, but we realized, oh yeah, we didn't put that in the front of our front matter of the comp plan. That really needs to be there. So that was a great point. So, and it is, we'll bring a report to you every year as an update for the school improvement plans. And then every odd year, a specific update on the comp plan and any revisions that we want to see. So it's a very active, absolutely very kind of background. Yes.
I think that would be a great roadmap, just a good way to project what's going to happen in the next year and the future.
Yeah, I appreciate how, uh, the professionalism, professionalism of the document itself is, is well done. Also appreciate how, how it was built together. Community, staff, volunteers came together. So it seems to me to be, I love the theme and, and, uh, anyway, it's intended to be a strategic document. The, these, these other goals are more the tactical pieces of how it's going to be achieved. And as far as the strategic document, I think it's very well done. Anything else? Well, thanks for all the work on that. It's a big piece of work.
We've had a lot of help, bringing out a great people.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Lots of everybody.
Yes.
All right, moving on to discussion of draft board norms and protocols. So we met on June 3rd in the evening to, to begin to formulate a document, which we all have a copy of. Rachel had some comments that we each have that look like this. Do we have a copy of this? And there was some feedback and...
This is our clarification of...
And I had only one thing. Oh, I had two things. One, so if y'all are entertained, can you, can you look at page two of this? Down at the bottom, it says, Assignment of Committee Members and Representatives to the Board. And this is something we do every year in January. And then over on the right-hand side, it's the, how are we going to do this? And it only says committee assignments. So I would like to just strike the word committee.
It's just a citation.
It's just a citation. So my goal is to correct the document and take the word. And then the last thing, it's probably good for people to know this, but I don't remember us specifically talking about this answer. So I thought I could read that. When and how the board conducts self-evaluation. Now, we haven't done this in a really long time. But we made a statement, the board will conduct a self-evaluation annually. Now, I think this was near the end of our meeting and we were all very tired and are ready to go home. But I'm not sure what that means yet. So we are saying that we're going to do something annually. I would assume it would need to be at the end of the year. I'm not sure what the evaluation looks like. But we're pinning ourselves down. I just want us to make sure we know we're pinning ourselves down into...
I don't remember saying that either.
No, no, no.
I know, I know the question came up, but I'm not sure where the answer came from. I, I do think it's important for us to at least, if not a formal evaluation, to talk about the pros and cons of board's activities over the course of the year. How we go about doing that to...
So this is not, this is not the evaluation where we, we go out into the public and say, hey, how are we doing? Because that's all over the map, right? And, and this is internal, right?
The discussion would make sense.
Okay. We're good, Dr.? Yes, easily, yeah.
I'm doing many, many, many of these types of things. I could suggest using this context that you developed to evaluate yourself on as a self-reflection tool. And a simple rubric on a rating scale one to, or one to five, how did you do in this area? And do you do that as an individual board member, as a board? And then that would give you very instant, like, feedback that we could create pretty...
We need to do that, not during budget cycle.
You would at the end of the year. Or maybe a summer retreat.
Right.
Okay. So it could happen in June, July, sort of, I'm afraid.
So we could just use this document as a guide.
All right, so we drafted it, so we drafted it this year. I'm going to say we're done for this year. So next June, that'll be our plan to visit it next June. And then we'll evaluate how we're doing against these ones. Does that sound okay? Okay. Good idea. That's all I had. So you made any comments about Rachel's comments? This, the comment says she let us remind me of what we talked about at the meeting.
I, it makes sense to me and I think we ought to change it.
Yeah, change.
Okay.
You might want to read it so that everyone...
Did everybody have? So these corrections were, uh, I guess I need to make sure. So this was on the front page, right?
Yes.
We will be aware. Right, so the fourth bullet on the first page, the clarification, the new statement is, we will be aware that we will always be perceived as school board members, regardless of different roles that we play as individuals or in board member, citizen, parent, etc., postpartum. And the change would be, the change is to say this, we will be aware that we are perceived as school board members, even though we may hold multiple roles as individuals. And same thing. Yep. So it's simply, uh... Some answers, but it's a better wording than what we... And at the very end, there were, there were notes about, the other correction was, at the very end of the document, there's a section of the norms and protocols related to when board members violate norms and protocols. Stronger.
Can't imagine that happening.
And then it is a graduated process. The first violation, there's an action, the second violation is an action. And this, this comment from Espinam relates to the third violation. And it would, instead of reading as apparently it's, it would read, uh, the board, if, if the board deems there is a certain third violation, it would result in a vote of censure by the board. They vote of censure.
There's just no mention of...
A vote. There needs to be, at that particular point.
There we go.
So the other thing that we talked about was that we don't really know what censure means, but exactly, yeah. The public's... Those are worse. But we have a year to, to learn ways of... And our goal, we hope that our, our goal is to have these things to, to ensure normative behavior of the school board. And, uh, and our goal would be to adopt these norms and protocols tonight with these changes. Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
You sure? Is there any other discussion on that? All right, moving on to public comments. Is there anybody that'd like to address the board this evening? If you rise and come to the podium and state your name and your district. One of the things you'll find, while Catherine's coming, one of the things you'll find in the board norms and protocols is that we will not have exchanges of communication during public comment. But we're making sure that if you have a question during public comment, that we reply to you officially in writing. And so that's why we need to know your name and your script so that we're able to respond properly.
So we all could find this.
Got to find you.
Sense. I'm going to bring this down.
Thanks.
It's thrilling, absolutely, to be back in this room as a personal aside of having spent more than a few hours here. Not just in school board meetings. It is a little disheartening, though, to realize that the ambient sound level in this room has not greatly improved in the however many years this room has existed. And I greatly appreciate, as a person nearing their 72nd birthday, who listened to way but, way too much rock and roll as a kid, way too loudly. If you all would, please always use your lovely... If you all would, please, always use your lovely microphones and put them close to your mouths when you do so. Because in this room with the air AC going, it's exceedingly difficult to hear. If you're not, maybe even in the front row, I don't know, I was in the back, and we couldn't hear the first half of many people's comments. And that was, and in fact, people who were right here, standing at the microphone could hear. So I...
That is a function of the speed, of the angle, of the volume level, I don't know what it is, but, yeah.
I very much appreciate all that you're all doing, and the many hours that led up in preparation to your, to your, your face.
Who'll be next?
I'm just stepping out, not you.
Check out. You're the only one who exited, it happens to be in the safer exit, sorry. Anyone else? Alright, moving on to action items. Is there a motion to approve the board management plan? So moved, have a motion, Mr. Groves, your second.
Second.
Second is Bynum, all, is there any discussion? All in favor, aye? Aye, pose no. Or is there a motion to approve the federal program applications? Thanks for coming, good to see you.
Bye, thank you.
Bye. We have a motion to approve the federal program applications as presented this evening. So we have a motion, Ms. Myers, your second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Uben, is there any discussion? An awful lot of work for very little bit of money. I'm sure if we looked at what it costs us to do the management of the fund, sometimes I want to tell them to go away.
Audit, yes.
The audit.
The audit, the audit. Alright. We have a motion, a second, right? Didn't you already do that?
Yes.
Is there any other discussion, sorry. All in favor, aye? Aye, pose no. Is there a motion to approve the comprehensive plan? So moved, Mr. Groves, who has a second.
Second.
Second was Bynum. Me too. And wonderful, wonderful job. Really, great job to the team, we came together, and this document is beautiful. All in favor, aye? Aye, pose no. Is there a motion to approve the board norms and protocols as we modify them this evening?
So moved.
Motion, is that Mr. Uben? Motion, Mr. Uben, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Meyer, any comments? Thanks to everybody for two and a half hours last Friday. Two Fridays. Larry, so we met at Larry's house, at his facility, and see, the thing is, when we were done, he got to go to bed. We all...
Had to drive home.
Had to drive home.
Had to clean up.
Okay. It's a good document, and, and very, and should be very helpful. All in favor, aye? Aye, pose no. Is there order, new business? Dr. Gremmly, do you want to speak to this?
Everybody else? No, we're just, it's new business.
Okay, new business. Dr. Gremmly has something she would like to summarize for us, related to grant funding.
So recently, I've seen that we had to, sorry, I'm going to pull this way closer, is that better? Alright, good. So recently at the board supervisors meeting, we submitted another supplemental appropriation letter, which we need to do anytime that we receive a grant, for instance, that was not in our original budget. Because no funds can be spent in the school without being appropriated first by the supervisors. So that's usually a process that just happens in, sometimes it can send agenda, if there's a question, one, X, red. But what happens when that number gets really big, and gets to about a 1% threshold, by Virginia Code, there must be a public hearing on that number. So our schools keep, you know, hitting that floor, so there's, there's public hearings every now and then that do generate some questions, like, "Why are you not budgeting for all that money then?" Or, "Why is that?" You know, so it just generates some questions. So we put together just a little bit of a memo to the chairman as a new business, because it did come up recently in the last board supervisors meeting. That just kind of goes through the application process, when we apply for a grant, and remember, what we're budget planning for the fiscal year, our budget is pretty much in its completed draft form in March, which we generally, look, we don't even have a state budget yet officially, right now. And then, you know, there's even a whole lot more that changes throughout the summer. We get our actual federal allocations of grant funding in August, usually, September timeframe. So all of those things do need to be reconciled with the county, but then there's a whole lot of applications that aren't even available, or that we don't even know about, or that will exist. So, and when we apply for grants, it is a lot of work, and we do have a very limited staff, a limited band, so it's not like we can apply for every single thing that's there. So we generally run it through a three-question test, whether it supports the mission of our CPS, does the project proposed in the grant align with our comprehensive plan, and also, does this project require a local match, either in county or financially from the school or community? So that's a big, because some grants out there will say, "I'll give you this much, but you're, you have to do 80% of everything else." So those ones we kind of screen first, or like, spray. So if we have those, and there may be some instances where the project is just so, such a fit for what we want to do, that then we do go out and try to collaborate with other organizations, try to raise money in other ways to meet that match somehow, or, you know, build it into our budget if it's something we're going to go for next time. The appropriations process I, I talked about, we submit a letter that has any reconciliations, actual allocations, new grants that we've applied for in, in one fell swoop to be repeated. At that point, the supervisors will, will go, I've never had a board not say, "No, you may not have this grant money that saves the county money." But, you know, it could happen, it did happen in Virginia County before, for preschool money, they said, "No." You know, so it can happen, in which case you can't spend it anyway. So once it hits the 1% threshold, that's when we have a hearing, anyone has questions or wants to speak to any of the grants that we applied for, can do so. And then I just provided a quick summary of all the grants for FY '22. So commit to be fit, you see there's $327,000 there, Big Kids Grant, that's our school-based wellness center, Family Futures and Headwaters, funding for our pod coordinator, financial aid coordinator, Sally Kowits. Our Teacher Wellness Grant is $215,000, and that has a lot to do with our recruitment retention initiatives. That SIP, the SIP team had actually recommended that we continue to work toward pulling in philanthropic dollars to help support the promotion of our school district, and recruiting and retaining premier staff, and attracting students as well. The Pat Foundation, Renaissance Day, that seemed to be such a good idea, but we needed more money to do it again. We tried it a different way, and the Pat Foundation came through for us so that we could do it again in the spring. We also applied for the farmer's market pop bucks through the summer, which is very popular with our families. The SRR3 funds did raise a lot of questions, because SRR, we should have probably known about, right? Because we've known about SRR3 for a couple of years. Well, what happened was, in the SRR funds, which is your American Rescue Plan dollars, that the feder- federal government issued to the states, the states did what they said they were going to do, but then a lot of divisions didn't maybe utilize all of it, or a state program didn't come to fruition that they had planned on. So they created these set-aside SRR3 grants that came out much later in the year, I think it was about January, which of course is way after our budget is done, and it was still a competitive grant program. So we still had to apply and outline and create this whole new logic model with how now we're going to use SRR3 set-aside funds. We applied for $450,000 and got almost $100,000. We tried, but it's definitely money that's going to help support our summer school, after-school programming, unfinished learning. So it, and that will also stretch out our regular SRR3 dollars, which we have two more years to spend. And then also, then domino effect saves the county money.
Money, yeah.
Wait, so, in those ways. So we're excited to get that. There were a couple of other similar situations with SRR3 mentor teacher funding and flow-through ARCA funds that came automatically. And then our safety audit was really late this year. Usually we apply for that in August, and we didn't see that application until like November. And we just recently found out toward the end of the school year that we did get $25,000, and that supports our security equipment, cameras, locking mechanisms, and things like that. So again, part of our plan, part of our crisis management, a safe school safety audit that the county would have to fund if we didn't go forward these funds. So we're really trying to be good sorts of money. Overall, in FY '22, that's $871,000 in competitive grant funding that we went after to do what we needed to do for students. So I just wanted to clarify some of that, because it does come up why there's so much money later, but that's, that's the story.
So when it reaches that level, it's the county board that has to provide, or has to advertise on what we're hearing, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Not us.
Not, no, that's the, because it's not just the schools that will generate that, it's, the 1% threshold is monitored for any shareholder. So it's the RCPS supplemental appropriation request, plus the sheriff's office, plus, you know, all of that.
All of the appropriations are added together, when they reach that, then they come to, to, okay.
Yes.
Great, I appreciate the work on that, just to make sure we know. This 1% number and that, you know, we're getting attention, and it could be, you know, we need to educate people, what, what is, what's up with 1%? Because it could cause, you know, rumors. Any other questions about that?
Well, the times into that, I thought we had talked about putting school safety discussion on the agenda pretty much. Did that not go through?
I don't recall.
We mentioned it.
We talked about it, yes.
We can make sure it's on next month.
We could have had a...
A review or something of what we're doing.
Yeah.
I know we don't release it so much, you know, for safety protocol, but it'd be nice to, you know, light up capital improvement, grants and funding, and, you know, where we're going in the future with it. Is there some definite upgrades that we should look into?
So will I add it to the agenda next, next month?
Sure.
School safety review.
We, we had talked about determining at the end of a meeting what we would like to see for next month.
Right.
And that, that's where it came from.
Yeah, we had, we had done that, and officially, since we now have norm, norms and protocols, that'll happen next meeting.
Yes, sir.
That's the first case of that.
Yeah, I agree that we should have that discussion.
Just maybe an overview of where we are and, and where we need to go.
First, Dr.?
There you go.
There you go.
It's warming in my mind.
There you go.
Alright.
And what we can't release, all we can...
Is there any other new business stuff? Our next regular meeting is July the 12th, 6:30, back in the very same rooms. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
I move the board convening to closed session for the following purpose, discuss and consider the appointment of staff of professional positions, classified positions, resignation of professional positions pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2, Dash 3711A1.
Have a motion, Mr. Groves, your second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Uben, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
So are we going to stay in here?
We usually do.
Kick everybody out? And, and so we're going to be in, in classes? Just a couple of them?
Sure, so, okay.
I mean, a couple of them that are, just the highlights.
So we received word recently that our band director had taken a job in another district. So we are actually very excited to announce that we're hiring Kalia Page as our new band director, who also has some theater and is just really motivated to rebuild our whole program, very excited. She's out of Bridgewater College, and she is super impressive, we're very fortunate to have her. We hired a new special education teacher, a new Spanish teacher. And then we're working on finalizing a math teacher appointment as well. So the personnel report will be uploaded to board docs.
Right, is there a motion to adopt the personnel report as it was presented this evening?
So moved.
We have a motion, Mr. Groves, your second.
Second.
Second from Ms. Bynum. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye? All in favor, aye? Aye, pose no, it's ordered. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We have a motion, Mr. Uben, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Groves. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, pose no. Good evening. Thanks for coming.